I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, I will now call the roll. Commissioner President Wyatt.
Present.
Commissioner Vice President Webb.
Here.
Commissioner Andrews. Commissioner Andrews. Commissioner Gray. Commissioner Gray. Commissioner Dr. Harris. Commissioner Dr. Harris, I saw your name, could you verbally confirm?
Is he muted?
Nick, can you check for the speaker output, I'm seeing his name popped up, I'll come back to Commissioner Dr. Harris. He says present. Commissioner Hembry.
He said he's unmuted.
Oh, Mrs. Hembry, I just saw her.
I was just at the restroom.
Alright. Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Malone.
Here.
Thank you. Also present in attendance this evening is Mr. Rashawn K. Hassan, Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Cameron E. Cox, Chief Financial Officer, Board Secretary, Dr. Elizabeth Philippatos, Chief of Student Services, Dr. Jean Gordon, Chief of Instruction and Programs, Chief Chief Chris Payne, Chief of Information Technology, Chief Vashon Lamont Hill, Chief of Marketing and Communications, Dr. Danielle Mastro Giovanni, Chief of Equity and School Improvement, Mr. Jeffrey A. Morton, Assistant School Business Administrator, Assistant Board Secretary, Student Commissioners Jocelyn Cologne and Wendy Caliphat. Madam President, we do have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Cox.
Welcome to the business meeting of the Plainfield Board of Education. Members hope that you find this meeting informa- find this meeting informative, excuse me, interesting and informative, pardon me. We thank you for taking the time out to attend. Please be advised that this and all meetings of the board are open to the media and public consistent with the Open Public Meetings Act and that the advance notice required therein has been provided to the Courier News and tapped into Plainfield on Monday, May 12th, 2012, to be advertised on Friday, May 16th, 2025, and also provided to the Plainfield Public Schools District website, the Plainfield City Clerk, Plainfield Police Department, and Plainfield Public Libraries for posting. Madam President, I will also note General Counsel's attendance.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cox. Good evening, everybody, and we appreciate you being here at our business meeting for the month of May. Those of you here in person with us and those of you on virtually, thank you for your attendance this evening. I want to begin by just highlighting some exciting moments from the past few weeks. We had our very first esports invitational that was held right in our esports arena and we engage, our team engaged with teams across the state in addition to a team from California, from Compton, California. So that was very exciting. We got to engage with those student athletes on Friday evening and then they started their invitational on Saturday. I'm sure they had lots of fun. It was a proud moment for not just our district but our students and I look forward to continuing expanding that access of these innovative and engaging opportunities for them to take advantage of. Cardinal Day was a success. Truly enjoyed the performance by Schoolyard Rap, it was very powerful and impactful and his performance resonated with the fabric of what makes up our community and our different cultures and it was very, it was very fun. So I just wanted to make sure that we highlighted that. There were performances Friday afternoon at the schools and I heard that those were amazing although I was not able to attend, but I heard that the students were very much engaged. So I'm looking forward to finding ways for us to continue to create that type of experience for our students moving forward. The board has some stuff coming up that we have to tend to that are requirements for us and that we're past the budget process. We're shifting our focus to board and CSA evaluation. So you'll get an email, also our board retreats. So you'll get notification as to when those public meetings will take place and you'll be able to attend if you so do so desire. And then also we'll be sure to keep you updated on anything else that the board has to report out on regarding our district and board goals. We're already at the end of May, prom is Thursday and we have graduation coming up in June. June 21st? And so oh, June 24th, June 24th. Those dates are on the website, so you can make sure you view the website and just continue to root our students on as they wrap up their school year. I want to recognize all of our students who participated in NJSLA testing last week. We are very proud that they showed up and that they took their time and that they dedicated themselves to dig in with deep in utilizing what they've learned throughout the year and applying their knowledge to that test and we're looking forward to seeing some outstanding results as a result to it. And that is really it, we're gonna have our highlight video played in a few moments and then we have some presentations that I'm very excited to see from our students here in the district. And enjoy the video as it captures all of the moments of things going on in Plainfield Public Schools in the past month. Thank you.
Madam President, just before the video gets started, we were notified that Commissioner Johnson is online. So I'd like to note his attendance virtually for the record.
Thank you. Oh, yes, and our thurs to the commissioners here as well.
Kaylin has now arrived, thank you, sorry about that.
So, thank you all for coming out this evening, particularly our members of our cheer squad, parents, our coaches. We wanted to take an opportunity to just recognize you all and honor you for all of your hard work and dedication.
Go Be Red!
Okay, so now we have a proclamation to honor all that.
Cheerleaders! Take us to church! My E's were a Roman, I'm a graduate of Clark Atlanta University, being represented here today. That's why I said, brotherhood encompasses your blood.
My name is Pedro Piazuli, I'm in eighth grade and I want to be a doctor, nurse, or like a lawyer or something when I go out.
Are we ready? Brother, knock that down! Thank y'all so much, are we ready, playfield? That shit did party!
Press the button.
Thank you. That was a great, great month in review videos. Huge, huge shout out and thank you to our Office of Parenting and Communications. After watching that video, it's clear that we are definitely Plainfield Public Schools forward. And for, you know, anyone out there who says they are unaware of what's taking place in our school district, you can always get a small dose by tuning into our monthly board meeting because we're coming out with videos at least once per month. And you can also subscribe to the district's weekly newsletter, the Cardinal Connection, which we send out digitally utilizing the ParentSquare tool. So we're gonna continue on with more goodness this evening. At this time, I'd like to call up the Killer Cardinals. The district's robotics team to give us a presentation and show us, just give us a little taste of what they do. I don't see Chris here. Where is he? Oh, there he is. So I want to thank Chris for reaching out to me and stopping me, saying, "Mr. Hassan, I want you to come by to the robotics, check us out at the robotics club on the weekend, on a Saturday." And, right, so he did, Chris did everything that you would expect a student to do, right? He stopped me, mentioned it to me face to face, then he followed up with an email, right? And when I showed up on that Saturday, that's when he made the real ask. Like showing up on Saturday was just to get me in a room, right? But when I got to that room, that was really an opportunity for me to see the great work. But to then also be invited to that robotics competition at Montgomery High School that I had the opportunity to come out and see how students participate in. So at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to the robotics team so you all can show our board and our school community exactly what I saw when I came out to engage with you all.
Good evening, Plainfield and Plainfield Board of Education. My name is David Ixhuna.
Good evening, everyone.
Good afternoon, my name is Wilson Cordova.
Good afternoon, my name is Dani LaGee Smith.
Good evening, my name is Fabrizio Maldonado.
Good evening, my name is Kai Narasawa.
Good evening, Johnson E.B.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Eric Mercaya.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Brian Romero.
Good afternoon, my name is Christopher Haynes.
I am the president of the robotics team and I am, we are excited to be invited here. We appreciate you inviting us to come present what we did this year and as a token of our gratitude, we would like to give you a little something of our team. So first off, I want to get started with who created FIRST. This is Dean Kamen. He is, he wanted to expand STEAM to students and engage them by having this competition in which you build robots. However, it first isn't just about building robots, but it's about creating this tight-knit community of students and alumni who come together and create this robot. You engage in networking, engage in teamwork, and as Jessica will explain in a bit, the core values of what FIRST is.
Okay, so just to explain a little bit about the core values of FIRST. First, we have innovation, you know, the ability to create, the ability to go above and beyond of what people expect you to do and just let your imagination and let your creativity run wild. We have impact, you know, FIRST is a global organization. It's impacted millions of teens like us across the world. I know it's impacted me personally, I know it's impacted every single person on this team, the work that they do for us. We have inclusion, you know, FIRST is for everybody, robotics is for everybody. It doesn't matter what you're interested in, you could be into STEM, you can be into designing, you can be into anything. FIRST has a place for you. We have discovery, you know, similar to innovation, the ability to just let your creativity run wild, as I said previously. We have teamwork, which FIRST has brought us all together. In the beginning, we, some of us didn't know each other, but at the end now, we're all a really close group of friends and we're really tight and I feel like bringing FIRST to the Plainfield community in general, it adds to the, to the family aspect, you know, we're all a team and I think that FIRST just solidifies that. And finally, fun, FIRST is fun, robotics is fun and we want to, you know, bring that fun to, to everybody essentially. Just show everyone that, you know, robotics is fun, FIRST is fun, and it brings us all together.
Now that you have a quick little idea about what FIRST is as a whole, I want to break it up into the three sections, which are the challenges that consist of the FIRST LEGO League, the FIRST Tech Challenge, and the FIRST Robotics Competition. These are three distinct competitions, but for the FIRST LEGO League, it is for ages nine to fourteen and it consists of teams of two to ten with two coaches required. And the FIRST Tech Challenge is basically the FIRST Robotics Competition, but it's much smaller. These are teams that consist between two and fifteen members and they are for grades recommended twelve to eighteen, grades seven to twelve. The FIRST Robotics Competition is the competition in which we are in. It has unlimited members and some teams can grow up to be more than a hundred. There is a lot more grants available for the FIRST Robotics Competition as it is a much larger competition and, and this is basically what we like to call the Killer Cardinals STEAM Ladder. For elementary schools, we recommend the FIRST LEGO League. It is for fourth, fifth, and sixth, and it is basically establishes the foundation for working in STEAM. It builds this connection with STEAM to engage these students in something hands-on that they could get a feel for what STEAM actually is. And as they move on to the middle school, we have the FIRST Tech Challenge. It is for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. It basically puts their skills that they learned in the FIRST LEGO League into a brand-new challenge. They now know the basic programmings, they now know basic mechanisms, so now they can put it into something a little bit more challenging. These use, require a lot more smaller parts and it's basically, as I previously mentioned, the FIRST Robotics Competition, but smaller. The FIRST Robotics Competition is for high school students and it is unlimited because many people can come together from previous alumni and it's basically engaging much more students to the challenges that we experienced in the FIRST Tech Challenge and the FIRST LEGO League. And this leads on to build their careers with skills and experience so that when they go to further their education, they have this basic foundation so that they could succeed in their careers, whatever that may be. And this all connects because as our mentors, they are previous Plainfield High School alumni and they came back to help us and create this brand-new team after Team 136 retired. And this is, keeps going, 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 expanding this program to be a lot about STEAM but even beyond just STEAM and it's really amazing.
After you learn about what FIRST is, now let me introduce to you what, who we are. We are Team 10232, also called Team Killer Cardinals II. We started in 2023, we didn't start officially in 2023, but we started to complete the legacy that the previous team started. The previous team was the team of our mentors, it was Team 136, it was Killer Cardinals I. That's why we decided to complete their journey by naming our team Killer Cardinals II. The team started in the fall of 2023 when they decided to build a robot for a basketball shooter. It was called Orion. The team wasn't official, it wasn't connected to FIRST, but it was still a robotics team. It was, I think, only four members. We have David here, Wilson, and Chris, they were like the three main people that started this team. After they built Orion, you can see in here in this photo, this is the first robot that we have built, or they have built. We participated in the robot and parade to show the community that STEAM exists in Plainfield and there's a chance for everyone to come and help this community grow and give it like for everyone, for kids and for adults as well, to help this community grow further and further. That was a clip from the Fourth of July parade, but I don't think the wifi is connecting, but wait. Yeah, it's working now. After the, after the Fourth of July parade, that's when we started to actually make this team official. After, like, a lot of people have seen that this team exists, more people have started to join and that's when we decided to create Team 10232. We started out very little, we weren't that much, I think it's like five, six or something, and that's when we registered and became an official team connected to FIRST. And this year was our first year, first official year to participate in one of the competitions of FIRST. I will let Jessica to explain to you what our competition was for this year.
Okay, so essentially, this year's competition, we, it is called a ReefScape for the 2024 to 2025 season. So the main premise slash idea of this, of this year's season is, in the middle here, you see we have the barge, and with your robot, you can either hang, the main goal, you can hang from the barge if your robot has climbing abilities or hanging abilities. But the main way to score points is with coral that we have on the floor over there that we're going to delve more into later. You're, you would load the coral onto your robot and you would try and line it onto the reef, which is, which you have two on the field and they're on the opposing team's side. You use your robot to score coral into the reef, and there's multiple different levels. The higher the level, the more points you get. And we also have the net above here, which you can score algae into it. If your robot has a shooting mechanism, you can shoot algae into the net, and that also nets you points.
Okay, so quickly ReefScape kickoff, that's like prepped. We prepared for our FIRST competition, which would be in Pennsylvania, Springside Chestnut Hill. So we got to learn about stuff like being a scouter, taking notes from our, our competitions. So like, okay. So sadly, we did not win Springside Chestnut, Chestnut Hill. We did not win a trophy, but we did win a trophy later in Montgomery, Montgomery.
In Montgomery, that was our second competition. As Brian has mentioned before, we didn't win in our first competition. But it was more of a learning experience as like that was the first official competition for us to go and compete with other teams from all over the world, like from all over the country, different states. And in Montgomery, we won the All-Star Rookie Award. Thank you. That was in, that was in the event when they announced us as the winners of the 2025 All-Star Rookie Awards team.
To explain the awards that we got for Plainfield, for the robotics team, these are the two awards we got. We were the Rookie All-Star Awards. They were, for the FIRST competition, as you guys heard previously, we unfortunately did not win, but we got a taste of what it was like to, to be at our very first, FIRST robust competition. It was stressful, but at the end of the day, it was fun. We all had fun.
Yeah.
Yeah, we all had fun at the competition. Now, on the second competition, we were a bit less stressful because we knew what we were going into. We were relaxed, we stayed calm, we focused on what we could do, which was score corals onto our stand, and we got our very first Rookie All-Star Awards. This is our team, Team 10232.
Okay, so I would like to give a heartfelt, I'd like to give a heartfelt thank you to Mr. Franklin at the Mid-Atlantic Competition. We appreciate his support throughout the two competitions and at the district championship. Without his support, we couldn't win the All-Star Rookie Award without his continued encouragement and advice. We'd also like to express our sincere appreciation to our very own sponsor, which is Schneider Electric. We thank you Schneider Electric for your amazing sponsorship and support on behalf of the entire Killer Cardinals Robotics Team. Our team's empowerment and the chance to study, develop, and compete in the robotic industry have greatly aided by their kind donation. Our journey has been significantly impacted by your faith in our mission. We'd also like to extend, extend a special thank you to Mr. Donald Bowers, PHS class of nineteen sixty-four, for your personal encouragement and dedication to your, the program. Your connection to our school and commitment to the next generation is truly inspiring. It was a pleasure to meet you all and listen to your advice regarding the expansion of our program. It was an honor to make you proud as a new PhD, PHST.
And Schneider Electric, you might be wondering how we got to our first sponsorship as our, in our rookie year. Well, that is all thanks to previous Plainfield High School student, Dina Enriquez. She came back and offered, her company offered to sponsor our team, and we could not, we could, we had to accept it because it was our first year. Of course, we need, we need to, we need that money, you know? And these are our other mentors as well. Many of them are also previous Plainfield High School alumni, and we just thank them so much for all that they've done for us.
Lastly, we just want to thank a very special person, who without, without them, we wouldn't have done anything. To Ms. Johnson, thank you so much. Ms. Johnson, you have done to us a lot that, like, we, you did a lot. We just don't know how to thank you. You've been like a coach, a mentor, a mom, and a friend to us. We are very thankful, we spent a lot of time with you till eight PM at school, working, sometimes eleven, working, eating, and even listening to our problems. We really want to thank you, and of course, we want to thank Janiqua for all her work. She's our other mentor. You have been a great support to us, you have helped us a lot. Sometimes we were a little bit, not, yeah, but you, you've been with us. You've been patient, you've been with us, you helped us a lot. And thank you, everyone, today for having us and for hearing all that and for all the support that you have gave us. Thank you.
Thank you to you all for being here, for your presentation. And I just want you guys to know that we're all proud of you, and you win by simply just showing up and continuing in these efforts to, of course, obviously, have fun and be innovative and go out there and win and represent Plainfield with true Cardinal pride. So thank you all. Absolutely.
I just wanted to say, I found it very honorable for you all to carry on the legacy of the FIRST team, to validate them with your success, and I just wanted to say that was great. Really proud of you guys, very moving presentation, thank you.
Also, I'd like to thank Ms. Johnson. We've been around a long time. The robotics been about two decades, so it's been around, and she's done a great job. And all, everyone who has been on the robotics team became an engineer, a some scientist, and here are your future scientists and engineers. Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Excuse me, I just have to say, most of my friends are in the robotics studio, so I don't think people really understand how much time sometimes during flex, lunch, even sometimes after school, they're going over, finding the parts, making the blueprint, like, they really work. So I really congratulate you guys because I know it's really hard to do this.
Thank you, thank you.
That was basically how the competitions were. The main goal was to score the corals on the, on the reef. So yeah, we just wanted to show you a visual representation of how the competition was. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow, simply amazing, simply amazing. Our students another round of applause. So you scholars have certainly blessed us this evening and continue to uplift our community, but we have a little something for you as well. We have a resolution that we're going to present to, to you all, and I'll let, give this to Madam President for her to read the resolution.
Killer Cardinals II Rookie All-Star Award at the Montgomery District FIRST Robotics Competition. Whereas FRC Team 10232 Killer Cardinals II has demonstrated a strong commitment to science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, STEM, through their active participation in the FIRST Robotics Competition. And as, I mean, and whereas the Killer Cardinals II have cultivated a culture of innovation, teamwork, and perseverance under the guidance of four dedicated alumni mentors from FRC Team 136 Killer Cardinals Number One. Whereas the team's outstanding efforts and dynamic presence in their rookie season were recognized with the Rookie All-Star Award at the Montgomery District FIRST Robotics Competition, an honor that reflects their potential and passion for STEM. And whereas, the program embodies the FIRST core values of respect, collaboration, community involvement, and inspiring others in their school and broader community to pursue opportunities in STEM fields. And whereas, the Killer Cardinals II served as a shining example of how student-driven innovation and mentorship can lead to extraordinary achievements and long-lasting impact. Now, therefore be it resolved, that we proudly recognize FRC Team 10232 Killer Cardinals II for their exceptional robotics program and commend their continued contributions to STEM education and engagement. Be it further resolved, that we celebrate their well-deserved Rookie All-Star Award and commend the students, mentors, and school community for their collective achievement, while looking forward to the continued growth, leadership, and inspiration this team will bring to the robotics community and beyond. Signed by myself as the president. And Scott, I will present this resolution to you. There's happy for each of you to have one for yourself.
So Commissioners, if we could get a, get a photo with the team on the front, and if you have anything you'd like to say, you absolutely have the floor.
Good evening.
Evening.
It's always an honor and a privilege to be back at home, homegrown. And what it's about is passing the baton. And so as you see over there, two engineers that came from Team 136, who know our creed. We give back. We pass the baton. I look forward to the day when they take full control. But most importantly, we live by example. And my personal motto is, I can show you better than I can tell you. And so, let my actions speak for me. Thank you. After twenty-something years, to finally be recognized for something that we're supposed to do, I thank you. The first time I've ever had a principal and a superintendent come visit a team. My heart is overflowing. Thank you.
Commissioners.
Student Commissioners, can I? Excellent, everybody's going to look here, be beautiful smiles, awesome, don't move. Gorgeous, one more. Excellent, big tall shoulders, hold it. Excellent, thank you guys. We saw your smiles. You need some funding.
Chris is about to run with that. Before I leave, I will have another proposal. Yes.
Can I just add one thing? You know, I just want to be clear, your, your requests didn't fall on deaf ears. I definitely heard the, the pitch for doing it at younger levels. And I think it's important because we got to develop pipelines for that. But you know what's, I think, beautiful is that when you find spaces and places for people to belong. And so I'm glad to see the diversity there. I greatly appreciate the efforts and keep up the great work. And to Ms. Johnson, listen, I, I have a STEM team at mine, and I, I just asked Mr. Cox, I said, are we paying her right? Because that's one of the few teams, I know, that runs all year long, meets on Sundays on occasions for competitions. The, the amount of time and effort that I know goes into organizing those things together, we will never find enough money to compensate you with. But from the bottom of all of our hearts, thank you for greatly following.
And I'd like to say that this Plainfield's team, robotics team, is usually the only minority team that participates in FIRST. So I'm so glad it's back again. Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
So and thank you to our robotics team. And Mr. Andrews, I like the fact that you picked up on the pitch that was being made. One question I ask the students, I'll ask them two questions, what can we do to better support? And also, you know, what they saw as the vision for the future of robotics. One thing they expressed is that we don't currently have a pipeline in our school district that really builds up the robotics program starting at lower grades such as elementary K-five, et cetera. starting at lower grades such as elementary, K-5, etc. So I was surprised and grateful that you included that in your presentation, because when you, you brought to us the solution to the problem that you identified. We heard you loud and clearly, and we will, in fact, begin to work on that so we can build this program up, starting with our younger ones. And now we have a legacy that you can all stand proud of.
Before we move on, can I say something?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Harris.
So, um, you know, STEM is my thing. I have the nonprofit, and we focus on STEM. Um, but as the students spoke, um, it reminded me when I started to first teach robotics and coding um, to my middle school students. And I would start with a movie called Underwater Dreams. And not to take away from anything that our students presented tonight, but I really wanna use that movie, which is about, um, a minority group of Mexican-American students who were in California and really didn't know anything about robotics. Um, they started their team, and they end up beating MIT. Um, those students changed the dynamic, not only of their lives, but their schools and their entire community, um, right now in California. Uh, that community, um, puts a lot of engineers. I think, uh, more students from the robotic team goes to college than they do from their athletics teams. And I say all that just to keep our students inspired, to let them know that their work does not go unseen. Um, we support everything they're doing, and we encourage it, because what you're doing now may change the future of Plainfield's tomorrow. And I just applaud everything you do, and I hope as a board and a community, we can continue to support and grow these type of programs.
Thank you. Nick, we could move forward with my report? I feel like they need a theme song. Alright. Okay, alright. Good evening, commissioners, members of our community. I'd ask that at this time, you join me in a moment of silence for members of our team that we recently lost. Kathy Newton of Emerson Community School, Darlene Lucas, also of Emerson Community School, and Dalton Jordan from our Facilities and Grounds team. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. So, uh, again, it was a pleasure to recognize, uh, the members of the, our Killer Cardinals Robotics Team. Know those students are really doing a great job. And, um, you know, I'm proud to be the superintendent of Plainfield Public Schools and to be able to stand behind such marvelous students as they go out here and push forward and help elevate our school district. I'm gonna start here with our organizational chart. In our last board meeting, uh, was presented, but there was a lot going on in our board meeting and really did not have the opportunity to really dig into this. Uh, while I provided the high-level overview, I do wanna state to the board that as we go into executive session, I think it would be prudent for us to have discussions regarding what, uh, is presented in the proposed org chart. So on this slide here, uh, one of, the feedback I received uh, was that there was no comparison that showed our current org chart versus the proposed org chart. This is our current organizational chart for the 24-25 school year. Can be located on the district's website. And this is the proposed, uh, org chart for the 25-26 school year. And I look forward to having a more in-depth conversation with the board during the executive session, but I wanna highlight in public again what the major changes are with this organizational chart. Uh, first and foremost, uh, you will notice that the Office of Instruction and Programs has been, has been collapsed, or merged rather, uh, under the Office of School Management. Uh, you know, during the course of the, uh, this school year, we realized that the Office of School Management, the Office of Instruction and Program, they really have to, I think, uh, have greater alignment, if you will, because there are areas that really overlap. And if you don't have the, that synergy, or you don't have those teams structured appropriately, uh, we could be missing out on some opportunities to further move student achievement along. We've also been able to leverage the skill sets of one of our team members, which we anticipate, uh, for the 25-26 school year, to help us in one of those areas that the board is, has really been asking about over the course of the last two months. And that's our ability to effectively go after grant opportunities that exist. So, uh, with this change, we will have an executive director who oversees the turnaround schools, the annual school planning, and also grant management. So as a school district, we have a very, a vast, uh, grant portfolio that's managed, that includes all of our title funding, but that also includes other grant opportunities that are available that we decide to pursue. Uh, just in the last week alone, we've submitted applications for three grant opportunities that are, uh, that have been made available to public schools throughout the country. Uh, in the area of business operations, we still have a vacancy for our payroll and compensation supervisor. We were unable to fill that position in the 24-25 school year. However, we did carry over that position in the Position Control roster, because it is very important and critical for us. Uh, we are seeking a dynamic leader to lead that area of our organization. Uh, we have Mr. Ron Eddy, uh, who is here, uh, leading the charge for decades. And after his retirement, we've been, uh, very intentional to ensure that the person we hire is a person who is not just looking for an opportunity to elevate themselves as they pursue other career options. Alright, so being very clear, we don't want a person who looks at that as an opportunity to get a leg up so they can become a business administrator in the next three years. We're really looking for someone who is dedicated, committed, and really passionate about payroll and compensation, because that is such a huge part of our organization. Like, that can't be a fly-by-night gig. That has to be the thing that a person is really ten toes down for, because we need that person to be able to grow with the organization and also help us innovate and evolve in that space. So we do look to have that position filled for the 25-26 school year. Moving on to the Office of Equity and School Improvement. Are there were questions from some commissioners about, about the name of the office? I hear in everything that's taking place nationally, uh, executive orders that are coming from Washington, DC. As a superintendent in the state of New Jersey, our edicts and our orders come from the New Jersey Department of Education. And I wanna take my hat off to our Commissioner of Education for the beautiful letter of response that he sent to the US Department of Education confirming our compliance as a state as it relates to, uh, federal mandates for title funding, etc. So while there may be some chatter, you may see it or hear about it on the news, etc., we've not, we have not received as a school district any indication that we need to change the name of any of our offices. If it has the name of diversity, inclusion, and equity, we've not received those mandates. And it's also important to note that the work that we do, uh, with the, within the Office of Equity and School Improvement, it aligns with Chapter Seven of our Administrative Code here in the state of New Jersey. And that work is really centered around providing equitable educational experiences and opportunities for students. So what does that mean in layman's terms? Ensuring that we don't have one ethnic group of students who are being disproportionately classified into special education programs, as an example. That when we look at our suspension data, we don't see that our black males are being suspended at a much higher rate than any other ethnic group in the school district, although they only account for roughly twenty percent of its overall student population. That's really what our equity work is supposed to be centered around, and that's what we will continue to focus on in the school district. Now, Chief Yvonne Bousos, uh, who was here, and she was our first Chief of Equity and School Improvement, she retired. And she really set us up for success in terms of Phase One of what that work would look like. Uh, we now have, uh, Dr. Mastro Giovanni, who's leading the charge. And in this iteration of the org chart that I'm proposing, I am simply proposing to, uh, reassign the divisions that previously rolled up to Chief Bousos when she was here. We moved those, uh, when Chief Bousos retired and we had that vacancy, we moved those divisions to other parts of the organization, and I allowed them to stay in those other parts of the organization to allow Dr. Mastro Giovanni the proper time and opportunity for a thorough onboarding, so that she can get herself acclimated to that work. And I will tell you, she is ready to now have those divisions reassigned and under her leadership. I would also like to note that the, in my proposal, the Division of Multilingual Education, which would include the Director and Supervisors of Multilingual ESL Supervisors, and along with one multilingual data specialist, would also report directly to that office. The reason, uh, that I believe this alignment is crucial is because, one, our multilingual learners are such a, 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 a large percentage of our student population. When we are having conversations about the equitable experience for students, men and women law, the numbers don't. That population of students is the population that needs the most support across our organization. I think that we've been doing a great job of trying to figure out how to meet the needs and the demands of those students. But I think we also have to start looking at our, uh, programmatic supports through an equitable lens. And that's why I'm making that recommendation. So if we're talking about, uh, being an equitable school district, focusing on equity and inclusion, we can't do that if we're not talking about one of our most vulnerable population of students. So those are the, the changes that are reflected here. And also wanna note, uh, the two orange or brownish colors, uh, that will be a further conversation with the board, uh, as that, that was a recommendation or request that I made for, uh, realignment of, of roles. Uh, but that will be reserved for executive session. Alright, moving on to our student achievement data. It's on the highlight for the board. Uh, Madam President indicated in her remarks earlier, you know, our students are, have been engaged in NJSLA. You know, going out to the schools and speaking to students, it is a much different feel this year than it was last year. When speaking to students, students have been very confident that as they approached NJSLA, they felt more prepared this school year than they did last year. And I wanna thank our team for redesigning our curriculum maps and our pacing guides. I wanna thank our instructional coaches and our intervention, uh, teacher assistants for the personalized learning that they've been able to provide to our students who need additional support. Uh, this chart here shows us a school comparison and also a district level comparison. Uh, right now, we're looking at our high school students and the way they performed in our internal assessments for the fall and the winter with grades nine through twelve. Uh, you will note that across the district, we saw a seven percent gain or increase in their student proficiency from fall to winter in ELA. And we saw a five percent gain, uh, across those same grade spans in the area of math from fall to winter. Moving on to grade six through eight, you'll note that the district saw a seventeen percent gain from fall to winter in ELA, and an eleven percent gain from fall to winter in our math performance. This is the comparison for our elementary schools. Across the district in ELA, from fall to winter, we showed a nine percent growth, increase. And for math, across our elementary schools, we achieved a growth or increase of sixteen percent. So again... So we're continuing to chip away. Uh, we have some very aggressive targets that we set for ourselves this year. On the onset of the school year, we're really pushing our team of us to, to go after, on the NJSLA, close to, uh, twenty, twenty-one to twenty-two percent increase across these subject areas. We're not letting up on that. But we have to also be realistic about what's probable for us. Alright, in some school districts, you'll hear that getting a two percent increase in the course of a year over year is great. We need more than that, because we have to address this with a sense of urgency. So again, the team is doing a lot of great work, but it takes time for us to really move the needle to those extremes that we're looking for. And the Department of Education modified the, uh, the ESA targets, which are what we actually use to generate or create the original goals for this year. Those have actually been decreased, and I did send a memo to the board. I'm highlighting that, uh, a few months ago. Alright. Now to, uh, just to tighten up, uh, one last time, so everyone is aware for transparency purposes to discuss the budget. This is not a budget presentation. This is just me closing out, so everybody's aware of what took place. So, uh, on, uh, May fifteenth at that, uh, board meeting, uh, resolution was obviously passed by the board, and, uh, that resolution called for, uh, an, uh, an increase to the local tax levy. It was not what was originally proposed, but obviously after back and forth and, uh, multiple, uh, discussions and various iterations that were presented by myself and, uh, my administration, uh, we are now at the finish line, and the district's budget has in fact been approved by the Executive County Superintendent, uh, deeming that the board did take appropriate actions, uh, which were deemed to be in compliance. The full budget is available on the district's website. It has been available for a few weeks. And our budget really supports educational excellence and innovation. It aligns with our strategic goals with student success, equity, and sustainability. Here are some of the major highlights. I'll go through them, uh, for transparency. As it relates to, uh, curriculum and literacy support, that is a four million dollar investment in the budget. Some of the highlights include our focus on the science of reading, utilizing foundations integrity. In science, we are moving forward with the open science ed curriculum. And for math, we are, uh, moving forward with enhanced discourse strategies. And in literacy, we're gonna be leveraging our reading specialists and focusing on university partnerships to further expand, uh, our students' ability to read and comprehend. As it relates to STEM, we are going to continue to push forward and expand our STEM and STEAM initiatives with the six hundred thousand dollar investment. This includes support, uh, and initiatives that are centered on coding, robotics, and lab experiences, and also real-world STEM applications via partnerships such as the one we have with S2S, also known as Students to Science. As it relates to our after-school programs and our Saturday academies, that is earmarked, uh, as an eight hundred thousand dollar investment, which will help us provide greater support to our multilingual learners, math and reading interventions, and continue support with credit recovery for our high school students. I'd also like to shout out our, uh, multi, Division of Multilingual Education for the work that we've done this year with our extended school year opportunities for multilingual learners. Throughout this school year, we've also offered, uh, Newcomers Academy, which took place on Saturdays and after-school throughout our district. We also coupled that with a Parent Academy for parents who were interested in learning the English language as well. Our investment for career and technical education, uh, and this, this here really focuses on the investment in technology and infrastructure. That is a two-point-two million dollar investment, uh, taking place at Plainfield High School to continue our modernization of the CTE wing. Also, uh, ensuring that we are able to leverage our partnerships for industry and align skills, skills-aligned certifications, and intro, introducing state-of-the-art technology to further bolster those programs. As it relates to instruct, uh, infrastructure and facilities, we have a four-point-three million dollar investment for capital maintenance, three-point-two million dollar investment for our UNIVENT, uh, replacements, that is HVAC system upgrades at Cedarburg and Evergreen, and one-point-two-five million dollars for our sensory playground upgrades as a part of our inclusive, inclusion initiatives. Professional development and student well-being. Uh, those investments respectively come in at six-point-five million dollars for student well-being. And that includes, uh, maintaining our ratio of one social worker for every three hundred students. We will also continue to move forward and invest in our student well-being programs and family engagement initiatives. You'll hear more about that later on in the presentation. You'll hear more about that later on in the presentation. We have student-focused PDs and restorative practices such as our work, um, with our Leader and Me Initiative. And culturally responsive teaching, which will be a huge part of our professional development and our continuation of outdoor and multicultural learning events. So if you've seen our, uh, weekly newsletter, uh, any of our information on Instagram, you'll know that we recently had some amazing, amazing outdoor field experiences for our students. Uh, we had the opportunity to take students, uh, horseback riding. And I'm not sure if we did the Pocono, uh, that's next week. We will also be taking, uh, students to the Poconos also for out, outdoor adventures. And these are experiences that some students in our community may not ever have if we don't provide those opportunities here in the school district. So thank you to our Commissioners for understanding that vision and supporting us with that. We have a $1.5 million investment in technology and cybersecurity. We're going to continue to, uh, maintain our one-to-one device initiative. That's not just for the students, but that is also for our staff members. And our IT team has committed to ensuring our protocols are in place to allow our students to take their iPads home during the summer. And the reason we want to do that is because we have a partnership for tutoring program that is going to be available for our middle school students. We have a great partnership with Age of Learning. And these online platforms, we download them to our district devices. And as a parent, if you want to push your child ahead a little bit over the course of the summer, we can empower you to do so by giving you that device that has all of the applications and tools on it. We have all of the, uh, the proper protocols in place for asset management and tracking. And we believe in our students, so we're, we're not concerned that anyone's going to take an iPad home and not return it to us when the school year starts. Uh, we're amping up, ramping up our cybersecurity protections. Uh, sometimes I think the security is a little too tight. You know, like that Barracuda that filters out and blocks some of the emails when people are reaching out to me. But it is a great thing because we are not one of those school districts, uh, that have been featured in any ransomware attacks, et cetera. So thank you to the IT Department for understanding the need for this investment. Early childhood expansion. Uh, we are increasing the district's, uh, stake in pre-K education. We will have 222 seats that'll be operated in the district. And by doing so, this has really provided us the opportunity to give students a more inclusive environment. So this school year, if you are a student who attends a pre, is in a preschool classroom operated by Plainfield Public Schools, you are in a preschool disabled classroom, right? Labels, barriers, et cetera. We don't have the ability to make those classrooms inclusive right now because none of our students in district are what we would consider to be a general education preschool setting. However, next school year, we will be able to provide that inclusive experience so that our students won't walk into their classrooms with that label. You're just going to be in a preschool classroom. Whether you have, uh, whether you are considered to be a student who is preschool disabled or not, you all will be in the same environment, learning, growing, and thriving together. Now, budget. So, uh, tonight we have on the agenda, uh, Commissioner, the approval of the early childhood budget. And I wanted to just highlight for the Board, uh, so we all understand exactly what's included in that budget. This snapshot shows us the financials or the budgets that each one of our early childhood centers received in this current fiscal year and what they are projected to receive in the '25, '26 school year. As noted in this presentation, none of our providers are seeing a decrease in their, uh, in their operating budget. So our total, uh, budget as it relates to funding that our providers will receive is $20.8 million for the '25, '26 school year. And for us as a district, our total operating budget for early childhood will be $26.7 million. That also includes $3.3 million in carryover funding that we are required to now put into the budget for '25, '26. That is a mandate from the Department of Education. Continuing on with, uh, data, that, data that relates to our youngest learners. This is a snapshot of our kindergarten, uh, readiness. Uh, you may not be able to read the, uh, the skills that are listed, but I'll just read them from left to right. We have, starting with writing, then moving on to letter naming and sound fluency. Then moving on to, uh, to counting, counting verbally, counting objects, and number identification. The green for us means our students are exceed, meeting or exceeding our program expectations. So these are our pre-K, uh, our pre-K students and showing us that our kids are in fact ready and prepared to be received in our school district as kindergartners. And we should be very proud of these results that we're showing now. And this slide continues on just highlighting the writing, independent writing, and letter naming and sound fluency. So I think our students are in a very good position. Uh, we know we have more work to do as we close out this school year. And I want to thank our partners for, uh, and our early childhood centers for believing in us, for, uh, taking a chance on us as a school district when we came with those innovative ideas a few years ago. We wanted to try out a new curriculum, test it, prototype it. When we wanted to, uh, bring in foundations to get back to the basics of phonemic, phonemic awareness. You know, those were things that hadn't really been, uh, pushed in the local community or in the local education space here in New Jersey. But the opportunity was there. We wanted to be innovative and now the results are showing that we did in fact make the right decision and the right choice. So thank you for your support. All right. Now shifting into our, uh, mental health matters. Uh, our team continues to do great work. Annually, I'm going to ask that our, uh, members of our students, Office of Student Services just kind of come up and stand. These are the, the real heroes. Who are, who are front and center making sure that, uh, mental health remains a top priority for us as a school district. Not just for our students, but also for our staff members as well. Lord knows it's rough some days. So I know there's a video. Uh, it's Slide 29.
It's still the mom, like, like, everybody's equal to each other, like, like, for, for example, like, even everybody's like a human and nobody better than each other. Like you fit in, like, you're a part of, like, something. Don't be looked down in anything. You also, no one is better than you.
To belong to Clayton's school is like that I was here and I was not any other place and you can't tell me where I live.
Be able to do activities and be able to participate in field trips and, uh, all the other good stuff that was going to happen. It's like that's what it needs to be included.
It's like when you belong, I belong there too, and I'm like...
And you might belong somewhere else, but this is where I think nobody can tell you where you belong.
It means, uh, like, help you to not, to not burden someone because you don't know what's underneath to them.
It needs to belong where you fit in.
Um, you're happy and, um, you'll never let someone, um, let you down and you're perfect in your own ways.
Feel like, like, like you're somebody at the school and you're, I'm just like a random person.
And you really matter to, like, students at school, principals, teachers, staff, everybody in school. And it makes you feel wonderful that you belong at school.
To be someone who doesn't give up and someone is going to through stuff. You could just maybe make them feel a lot of better. Not make them feel worse because that is not a kind thing.
And in Clayton's school, you belong in, like, a lot of things because it's like you're in school.
It needs to be able to do activities and be able to participate in the field trips and the, all the other good stuff that was going to happen.
To be in someone's shoes means to, like, experience what they're experiencing and to not make fun of somebody just because of what they're going through, even though you might be damn pretty soon.
Walking in my shoes, like, going, being in my life and doing what I eat, doing stuff. Like being free. But somebody being me, it feels funny to me.
Everybody is different and I can't have people be in my shoes if they don't even know from my shoes I like. Cause for me, I, I want people to be themselves. For me to be my own self because the only person I put my trust in is myself.
To be in my shoes is like when somebody is getting bullied and it's like, and she's like, oh, it's a heat, that's she. And they're like, you're a friend or not, but you should always think up for them. And you should tell the bully, they say, you maybe you should walk in their shoes to see how it feels.
Is it, and like, like, is it like a gun?
It makes you feel intelligent, it's more...
Excited.
Like, I'm in a good place.
It's cool, I'm good.
Nice, uh, the social workers, it's like, it's weird. It's weird, it's more of a, not, not, I'm paying the social workers that buying times here.
The main thing about the school is that I'm happy to be here and I'm happy to be with all my friends.
It's Mental Health Awareness Month. And we're going to talk a little bit about why it matters and, uh, provide an overview of our programs and initiatives. Though the power of inclusion on mental health, inclusion for us is, is one of the cornerstones of Plainfield Public Schools. Inclusion fosters a sense of belonging and acceptance. Social connections reduce feelings of loneliness and isolation. And we've done that over the last few years in, in a number of ways. We are working to build social connections in the classrooms. But we also, we've also been very intentional to create environments and spaces inside of our school community that just call for greater connection and less isolation. And a great example of that is our initiative for our Community Lunch that we have at the secondary level in the district. All right, we also, uh, push for engagement and community activities to boost self-esteem. And we're focused on building supportive environments that promote emotional well-being and resilience and ensuring that our students and our staff members feel valued. Valued because we know that this enhances their motivation and their overall mental health. So under the Office of Student Services, every division is focused on inclusion. Our Division of Nursing, they focus on creating a safe space for all of our students. And the Division of Special Education, those team members ensure that we have inclusive lunches and special periods that promote inclusive practices throughout the school, intervening with equitable academic interventions. And the Division of School Counseling is ensuring that everyone is included by focusing on our four E's model. And for those of you who are unaware of what our four E's model is, that is our initiative to ensure that every graduate leaves our school district with a post-secondary plan, identifying one of the four E's in their path forward. And those E's are enrollment, enlistment, entrepreneurship, and employment. My E was enrollment and employment. And our Division of Student Services, our team members launched the Walk in Your Shoes campaign. And I think we actually started that with our, at, at our admin retreat over the course of the summer. I wore my New Balances that day. And I remember being asked, "What's the story of your shoes?" And I said, "Well, I bought these shoes early this spring and I've already run over 100 miles in these shoes." Our Division of Early Childhood Education is addressing bias through professional development. Uh, here's a sample of what's happened during the course of the school year. The Division of School Health, our school nurses, they're often the first point of contact for our students. They offer support for their physical, mental, and emotional well-being. And our health offices serve as safe spaces for students needing a break. Nurses work closely with social workers and, uh, professional school counselors to help students thrive both academically and socially. And usually, when we think about a school nurse, we just think about a person who's administering medication when a student needs to go downstairs and someone who's taking temperatures and maybe just passing out Band-Aids when students fall on, on the playground. But our nurses do a lot more. They're very, uh, a very integral part of our operation and particularly with our mental, uh, health initiatives. With our wraparound, wrapping around our students, our district occupational therapists, they played a key role this year in making sure that our new playgrounds were in fact inclusive and ensuring that all students can play, explore, and grow together. You may have had the opportunity to come out to the ribbon cutting ceremony at Cedar Brook K8. That was just the start of the journey. All right, uh, we had one member of our team who worked with, uh, Mr. Cox in his administrative office to identify the appropriate sensory playgrounds that would work best for our students. But after the ribbon cutting ceremony, we had great equipment, great playgrounds. But how are you supposed to use them? How should you engage with this new equipment? So that team member actually went out and led professional development sessions to ensure that teachers and members of the staff knew how to support children as they played on those new playgrounds. Right here, at the Charleston Anna Booker School, we are, are proud to be a partner with the Inclusion Project. And this is led by, uh, the Supervisors of Special Education Programs. So we are, uh, completing year two of this three-year inclusion project. And it continues to transform the learning environments right here at the Charleston Anna Booker Elementary School. And here's the impact. Through this initiative, we've been able to significantly increase the implementation of inclusive practices, ensuring that more students are being educated in the least restrictive environment. This is a key tenet of equity and access in special education. And we are constantly reminding our partners also that we want to make sure our school environment is, is as inclusive as possible. And I'll share a quick story as this building was being, uh, constructed. The SDA is responsible for everything in the building unless there was an add-on. And that included the, uh, room numbers that were placed on the outside of the doors. And I remember our team walking down the halls when we came in for a site visit and saying directly to the SDA, "You have to remove those labels that you have on the outside of the classrooms." We don't have special education classrooms, we just have classrooms. Right, so, uh, again, great work being done here by the team. We're glad to close out year two of this partnership. Now, inclusion through electives and extracurricular activities. Uh, here you will see a picture of some of our very own, I think that's you, Wendy, right? Uh, and our students from our JAG program. So students in the Plainfield High School, uh, Transition Program, they've been working with JAG to build career readiness skills, to gain confidence, and purpose while strengthening communication, leadership, teamwork, setting them up for, uh, post-graduation success. And through this, we've been able to promote collaboration between all students, including those who receive special education programming. And, and, and this has really ensured that we have greater access and meaningful participation. And I want to also shout out our JAG students who went on a tear at the recent conference. And I want to also shout out our JAG students who went on a tear at the recent conference. I went to Ms. Bogart Richardson's classroom earlier and I saw the trophy case in the room. Our JAG students brought back 10 of the 33 trophies. So guys, keep pushing. Now, what does intervention support look like in our school district? Last year, we again tried something new, something bold, something innovative. We repurposed or reimagined the role of a teacher assistant in our district and we now have a role, it's called an intervention teacher assistant. These team members provide tier-three intervention support to students who may be referred for through our INRS process. They provide this tier-three support and intervention specifically in the area of ELA. Why? Because that has been one of the areas that we've struggled with and has been a challenge for us as a district. But I'm proud to state that during the course of this school year, we had more than 900 students receive personalized support by one of our ITAs. Those students had targeted intervention plans and that equated to over 16,000 hours of direct support for those students. That includes inclusive student sessions and we had a little over 80 multi-tier support team meetings. That's huge because that means that we're decreasing the number of meetings that are taking place across the organization, which means there are less requests coming through for students to receive INRS supports because we now have ITAs that are basically meeting students where they need to be met and they're providing them with individualized support. So Mr. Malone, thank you earlier for the feedback, all right, on the comms piece that we talked about. So I want to make sure, you know, we highlight this for today, today's presentation and we'll move forward in the official communication that hopefully we'll get out and tap into. But we did put something out through our Cardinal Connection highlighting National Decision Day. So for us here in Plainfield Public Schools, our National Decision Day is a little different than what you might see in other school districts, right? Our National Decision Day was a celebration, but it was an inclusive celebration, right? We mentioned our four E's model and every scholar, we're here for every scholar and every E. We are a district that's united in post-secondary planning. So as of today, we have 72% of our graduating seniors who've already completed their post-secondary planning with the support of their professional school counselors and we do that through a great system of platform that our great director brought into the district, it's called Zello. And I think Plainfield Public Schools has become like the face for Zello recently, so if you are a member of any, of our community who's supporting our Clearinghouse Scholarship, you will note that our students now have an innovative portfolio that's made available for you to review as you make your decisions to award our students scholarships. So we're really just getting started with this. But on our National Decision Day, as you can see here in this photo, we not only had students who were representing the universities or colleges they were enrolled in, we had students who were representing potential employment placements. We had students who were there shouting out and representing their enlistment, right? Whether it was the Air Force or whether it was the Army. And also had students who were there simply representing themselves as entrepreneurs. So we will make sure that we further elevate that story so that the community knows what took place. Now, I'm willing to bet my last dollar, if you go across the state of New Jersey and even across the country, most school districts' decision day did not look like ours and will not look like ours. So shout, huge shout out to the team and thank you. So we've introduced some new protocols and procedures for HIBs and I'm proud to say that as we continue to track the number of cases that are reported and confirmed, we continue to see that number decrease year over year in our organization and that's because of all of the supports that we put in place. I don't want to paint a picture to say that our school district is perfect, but we have so many supports in place for our students and through our, I think our creativity and innovation, that conversation about not being a bully, we're making that a cool conversation to have, right? That's, being a bully is corny, it's not cool, right? And we actually, speaking of it not being cool, we brought a play here to our school community and the name of that play is Bullying, That's Not Cool. This is a part of our anti-bullying awareness campaign and we had over 630 attendees and also members of our board who actually acted and students who participated and took on various roles. But we're now gearing up, Ms. Shipman, to bring them back again, hopefully for the fall to do another show for our middle school students because we believe this is important and we believe that the message was in fact received and we want to double down on that. Lastly, moving forward to our Walk In My Shoes campaign. So students design shoes to reflect their personal journeys, their challenges, their triumphs, and their identities. It promotes self-reflection, it promotes creative expression at all grade levels, and it showcase throughout the schools just how important it is to highlight diversity and also inspire empathy. I recently participated in a panel discussion with leaders throughout the country and we talked about leadership components and what we want to instill in our organization and I was asked the question, what type of leaders do I want to develop in Plainfield Public Schools? My response was simple. As a superintendent of schools, I want to develop compassionate and empathetic leaders, right? Leaders who understand that you have to know what an experience is like for another person before you make any decision. And we're also teaching that to our students, right? To lead with compassion and with empathy. This campaign, it also sparked meaningful conversations and deeper understanding amongst students and staff. It foster compassion, inclusion, and a sense of belonging. And lastly, but most importantly, I think, is strengthen our school culture through storytelling and through shared experiences. So this is why mental health matters for us. And the last data point I want to provide is that through, with the support of the board, last year was another huge investment. I believe for this school year, we were somewhere around $600,000 to $700,000 to support counseling and therapeutic services and supports for our students. So we've been in this for two school years now and over the course of two school years, we've had 168 students who've actually received therapeutic and counseling services that have been provided by our school district. We provide onsite counseling, we provide community counseling, we provide evaluations for students, and we also have protocols in place for school clearances in case we've identified any behaviors that we think could be detrimental to the student or to the school community. So I'm very proud of the work that's being done by these team members here and I just want to say thank you. I'm happy that you show up each and every day to keep pushing me, right? To give you what you need, but also pushing to make sure that our students are getting what they need. Thank you. So that ends my report, Madam President. Are there any questions for me?
I don't have a question. Just thank you for that presentation and highlighting the stuff. Obviously there's some people that have to be special. But I appreciate highlighting how our students are being serviced throughout the district and the great work of our, and the great work of our student services department. They play a very, a very, very impactful role in the lives of our students just as our teachers and support staff do, but they're the ones trying to really, for that our students, that we're cultivating the whole child for our students. So I appreciate highlighting them. Zello seems like an awesome platform for our students. I did get to see the visuals of that because I'm a part of that Clearinghouse community. We're offering scholarships, so I was able to see that. I definitely want to see us utilize that platform across the district on as many levels as we possibly can and hopefully ensuring that our parents are well-informed and the staff members so that we can collectively encourage our students to build upon that Zello platform and build their individual portfolios because that's something to my understanding that can travel with them to each level and something that we can also continue to track. And then from a district standpoint, now we can definitely keep up with what's happening in our students' lives and kind of just alter how we interact with them and what we, how we provide and how we show up for them based on their needs from being able to view that. So I hope that that's something that we can make sure that we have a presentation on so that we all know how we can play a role in encouraging the use of that platform. But that's it. I just, I'm very, very excited to see all of what we have going on through student services. You guys are awesome.
I saw you look over there, you just got about, got about five, five to seven tasks. We'll meet, but the platform is great and to your, you really just highlighted, so we asked a question, why aren't, why don't, why hasn't the district done certain things? While the intent may be there, if the infrastructure isn't there, you can't get it done and you, if you do it, it wouldn't be done with fidelity and it might not be sustainable. So now that we have the platform, to your point, students, once you graduate, your Zello space is your space from that point on. As long as the district continues to maintain a partnership with Zello, you have it. I think the only requirement is for you to provide an updated email address, which would be your personalized email address. That way, our professional school counselors, guess what? Still have a direct pipeline to follow and support you. Now that the infrastructure is there, we're off to the races and I think, you know, we have the right person, you know, pushing forward with this initiative and giving us all the innovation that we need around this.
Do we have any more questions, Commissioner Johnson?
I just have a comment. So today was one of the, today was one of the worst, not worse, one of the roughest days that I've had in a long time. We're talking about mental health, right? So first off, excuse me for just having this shirt on, I came straight from work. So I was in a funk, I'll admit to it. I was in a funk. Mr. Andrews asked me, am I all right? I'm like, no. Mr. Cox, I mentioned to him earlier on the phone what happened to me today, so I'm going through everything, processing it, and then when I saw Wendy's picture, it's, something snapped to me and I remember a conversation, I don't even remember, I don't know if it was you or it was a couple of JAG students sitting at the scores table and they were talking about the trip and how exciting it was from the, I think I heard everything from the bus ride to the airport to the hotel to the kids. I heard every part of the trip and I'm like, these kids probably don't even realize who I am. And it, but I was getting the organic truth about their experience. So seeing her face in that picture snapped me out of the funk I was in. So mental health does matter and I thank you for that picture. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, for that. Anybody else?
Hi, it's Shante Smith. I just want to announce my attendance. My ETA was at 6:55 and I really am enjoying the presentation so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Go ahead, Wendy.
I was just gonna say, it was our pleasure helping you getting out that funk and it was just nice that you got to hear that, the personal like things from the JAG students without asking them. If the trip, I wanted a trip and I would tell you that trip was very much fun, it was very much educational and very much needed and we got to represent Plainfield and New Jersey there as a whole. So I want to thank everybody.
And you guys did that well. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from commissioners?
Equally underappreciated part of any education is mental health. We often talk about academics, but the reality is in the world that we live, you need grit, you need perseverance and so it's nice to see that we have the programming that supports that and opportunities are there again for us to focus on those pieces as well. So again, amazing job done to the Student Support Services team. Keep up the great work.
Thank you, thank you. If we don't have any more questions or comments from commissioners at this time, I am going to allow our student commissioners to share reports or remarks that you may have to share with us this evening.
No report today.
Okay. Nobody has reports today? Oh, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So this month and the past few months have been full of exciting moments and major accomplishment from Plainfield High School students. On Wednesday, April 30th, 175 sophomores participated in the Get Home Safe Conference with an important event focusing on teaching new drivers about how to drive safe and respect instructions from law enforcement. We also had our Bring Your Child to Work Day where staff kids got to explore classrooms, enjoy hands-on activities with other fellow classes, classmates at Plainfield High School and they met our team and the team that their parents work with. We also had our College Decision Day celebrating seniors who committed to one of the four E's, like Mr. Hassan said, employment, enrollment, entrepreneurship, and enlistment. And I would tell you this, based on the pictures that I saw because I was unable to attend, it looked so much fun. They got to tell, students got to tell where they were going, what college they were going to, whether they're going to the Army, the Air Force, and whatever they wanted to do after college, I mean after high school, sorry. So PHS hosted their first ever esports international tournament at Plainfield High School. I got to volunteer there and I just saw how much fun it was and I didn't really know much about esports until I went there and I saw the players competing and playing different sports and different games there. Tours were made to people that attended, they got to view our sports room, our auditorium as well as our theater room. And they got to compete with people from California and we went on a trip to New York and just saw and visited like different monuments in New York as well. Yeah, we also had the Clearinghouse scholarships and we had interviews over the month and nearly 440 seniors got interviewed. So it was great. I was there as well. Over 60? It was 60? Oh, sorry, my bad. It was 60 seniors that got interviewed at the Clearinghouse. We also got to go to the Career Development Conference, NCDC is a national event hosted by the Jobs for American Graduate JAG. It brings together students all over the country, like places like the US Virgin Islands and for multiple, for multiple days, we got to experience different things like leadership and career skills and networking and got to compete as well. On this trip, Plainfield High School students did amazing things from Alberta Romero being a finalist for the president-elect of national career. So he was able to run and he was the finalist. We also had Alejandro Habiba Abraham and Kyla Pittman placed top five in the country for business plan competitions, so they were top five. Alberta and I, Wendy Calafac, were awarded the Kent Smith Scholars Award. This was the first time in New Jersey since 2014 that we were able to get this award. So yesterday, actually, we went to the New Jersey State Career Development Conference like Dr. Hassan said. We got to compete in different things like entrepreneurship, creative problem-solving, video event, and career display. We won five first-place awards, four second-place awards, and won three third-place award. So it was just a fun experience overall. It was a fun experience overall. We worked really hard for over a couple of months and we got to go there and just show them what Plainfield is and what we come with. So it was amazing. And yeah, like it was fun. We swept.
That's right. Awesome. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So this past few months have been busy, especially with it being concert season. We have and are having numerous concerts. We have our dance concert, the band concert, we just finished our vocal studio concert in which we honored Mr. Crivvy, our previous, our previous chemistry teacher who passed away unfortunately with the storm is passing over. We also, like Wendy said, we also have Clearinghouse and we were able to host it, so it was a lot of people's first time seeing the school. So we were able to take them around, see different of the scholarships and the opportunities. It was just a really fun event. I was there, it was really fun. With May being testing season, of course, PAWS decided to do something fun for the kids before we went into testing with AP and JSLA and all that stuff. So we had a fun day in which kids were able to just kick back and do different relaxing workshops, so that was also fun. And also talking about kickback, relaxing, we also have our Mental Health Week workshops all throughout this week and counselors, social workers are just having workshops where kids can learn how to manage different aspects of mental health. We also had our theater showcase, which was amazing. I just have to give props to the theater studio and of course, I And of course, I recently was accepted into a Yale summer program. Yale studied a program for classical singing. Only 24 out of all the country is allowed, so I'm very grateful for that acceptance.
Oh, great. Congratulations.
So, and you know, PAWS is a giving back school. We love to give back and nurture our own community. So we have our National Dance Honor Society, which occasionally tutors and helps kids out with dancing over at Jefferson. And we also have our NHS Fund Day, just to help, we're planning our NHS Fund Day, which is to help clean up the city as well, hoping to do that with Mr. Wyatt. And we also had our Amazing Decision Day. I know a lot of, please, a lot of seniors came back and said that was like the most fun, to see their PHS friends, to be amongst them. And it was just so fun that they honored all aspects. As I know some people are going into fire, fire training and police academies, so that was very good. Bring Your Child to Work Day, I saw the offspring of the teachers that tortured me, so that was very well and very exciting as well. They're all so sweet. And I believe that, oh, and most importantly, we have our robotics competition. We, I appreciated the robotics studio and the robotics club over at PHS. And our robotics studio also placed fourth place in a competition, First Tech Challenge Flashback, and the theme was ancient Egyptian. And it was a little scrimmage, but they placed fourth place, so we're really proud of them. And I believe that's it for me.
All right. Thank you, ladies. Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. We are done with reporting to you all for this first portion of our meeting. She didn't have.
Make a motion to move the public comment to this portion prior to entering into executive session.
Do we have a second?
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Andrews and seconded by Commissioner Vice President Webb at the Board, adjust the agenda to allow for public comment to happen now prior to executive session. Heard the motion, are you ready for the question? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, have the same right. Motion carried. I'll read the announcement. At business meetings, privilege of the floor will be provided for 30 minutes to the public prior to committee reports. Members of the public in attendance will have the opportunity to raise concerns during this period of the meeting. Members of the public may speak once for a maximum period of three minutes by the clock. This time is not transferable from one individual to another. Privilege of the floor is now open.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Do we have anybody in person who would like to come up to speak for public comment at this time? We're going to entertain all members of the public who would like to speak at this time to come up. Now? You do not? Oh, okay.
Good evening. My name is Elena Rutherford. I live at 130 Pemberton Avenue, Plainfield. I retired three years ago as supervisor of the Office of Early Childhood Education. It's great to hear that the district has taken steps to make all preschool classrooms inclusive, and if I understand correctly, eliminating district self-contained classrooms, preschool classrooms. So I, I look forward to hearing more about this. However, I think that saying we are expanding preschool is somewhat misleading. I see tonight that the budget is to serve 1,365 children. That represents a decrease of 240 children. Those are pre-pandemic numbers. And a huge reduction of eight, of 16 classrooms and a loss of over $4 million. By now, we all know the benefits of preschool and long-term improved outcomes for children who attend two years of quality preschool, as opposed to children who may be able to attend one year or not at all. Unfortunately, with reduced preschool slots, the concern is that hundreds of students may enter Plainfield Public Schools with no preschool experience at all and trailing academically behind their peers. The number of in-district classrooms has increased with the purchase of Buff Two that had always housed 10 classrooms, representing 150 children. This in no, in no way increases the number of Plainfield Public preschool slots. Adding district preschool classrooms has not increased or even maintained the number of high-quality preschool classrooms that existed. In fact, the purchase of Buff One eliminated 11 preschool classrooms in order to house district administrators rather than 165 preschool children. In-district classrooms and the eight contracted preschool providers are all part of Plainfield's public preschool program. The quality should not be any different. There's a statutory requirement that former Abbott districts meet 90% of the eligible preschool universe. The preschool universe is determined by the total number of first-grade students in Plainfield Public School facilities, as well as charter schools, times two. That's where, how we get our universe. We have been told that the elementary schools are bursting at the seams, so it doesn't seem that we have fewer children in Plainfield. So I'm wondering, what is the current eligible preschool universe? And are we meeting?
One second, Ms. Rutherford.
Were you almost finished?
I'm finished. And are we meeting it? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rutherford. Do we have anybody else in person who would like to?
I would draw the motion.
Good evening, everyone. Catherine Bolch, 1314 Highland Avenue. And I brought some remarks that I want to make about AI use. But first, I just want to tell you how much fun it has been, this whole, since, I guess, January, that Lunchbooks readers have been going to the elementary schools and reading to children and bringing books to give them to take home. And mostly, we've been concentrating in Stillman Elementary and Emerson Community School. And it is so fun to go read to these kids and have conversations with them about story development and characters. And also today, we had a conversation with a third, a third grade class about the purpose of reading and what, what adults expect from them, the children, as an outcome. And it was, it was, you could see their brain working. Oh, you mean, all this is for something to happen later, like jobs and being, you know, happy in life and, and being successful in whatever we want to do. And it was, it was just the most wonderful conversation. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to be able to go to read to these students. The district has been a wonderful partner with the Lunchbooks Program. So what I brought today was, I have some questions and some comments about AI use, and I've titled it, "Show Me the Data." So who is collecting data on the effects of AI use on children, on children of color, on children from low-income families, on children of color from low-income families who have immigrated here? I don't know that answer, but I hope our superintendent, business administrator, and board members do know the answer because they are the ones spending dollars on devices and programs for low-income children of color. If past is prologue, the experts don't necessarily have all the answers. Remember the reading program that 80% of districts nationwide, including our own, bought decades ago? That program called Whole Language was approved by the Bank Street School of Education and then sold without proper testing in students like ours. For 25 years, scores of Plainfield students graduated without knowing how to read fluently. We know better now. And thanks to our superintendent, former chief of curriculum, Dr. Jean Gordon, and the board budget support, teachers now have the programs, training, and literacy coaches they need to teach phonics. Results in the elementary grades are promising, I understand. And, but from the proficiency scores, I see that they're even better than I thought. Going forward, our district is faced with buying AI programs, as many school districts are. Do we or don't we buy them for our students? Students from low-income families, students of color? Is the district being fooled by the tech company's sales pitch? Are you assuming that just because an AI program works for students in Westfield and Summit, that it's going to benefit Plainfield students? Students from low-income families, students of color? Show me the data. For the record, I'm not saying you shouldn't buy anything related to AI. The point I'm trying to make is that if we want students to read and write fluently, we need to teach them with proven methods. There are many districts with students like ours who have figured this out. You district officials are following that same successful playbook. You collaborated with all stakeholders on what needs to be done for students. You hired a superintendent who was well on his way to accomplishing many of those plans' goals. You board members have approved a responsible budget. Don't mess it up now by buying the wrong programs. Demand that the tech vendors show you the data. And I don't mean early data. I mean data relevant to our students, students of color, students from low-income families. Because if the tech companies can't show you that data, they are hoping you'll buy the product and then they will collect the data from our students to sell to their next client. So we'll be giving away the data for free. So, the end.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Rutherford. Do we have anybody else in public, in person, that would like to come up and speak for public comment at this time? Nick, do we have anybody online?
One.
Okay, you can patch them in.
Laura Miranda Brown.
Good evening. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we hear you. Good evening.
Good evening, Laura Miranda Brown, 1345 Highland. I'm concerned by the reorganization proposed here tonight. How does a school district reorganize itself and delete the standalone Department of Instruction and Programming? How can we stand up here and highlight how great the achievements were this year as a result of the work of the programs and instructions team did, and then get rid of the department, and then remove the person who oversaw all those changes that have resulted in such success? How do you reward the person at the helm of that department? It looks like you are being asked to remove her from overseeing any staff and changing her title. I also want to highlight that Dr. Gordon is being transferred to a role that has one of the most amorphous titles I have ever had the misfortune of reading. What exactly is an executive director's school management? I read that as a facilities role, which seems an odd role for someone who's grounded in pedagogy. So I really would urge you all to reconsider that decision. Next, you will be voting tonight on item P7, which pertains to the energy services contract with a third-party provider as it relates to what it can only infer to be clean energy generation from solar panel installations and other measures. Your original contract with them was for $16.5 million, and now they need $19.5 million to do the work. Was there a change in scope to that project? Can you please explain why an additional $3 million is now needed? For the public's benefit, the resolution outlines that the district sold bonds back in October for over $15 million to cover this project. Now we're being asked to pull $3 million from capital reserves to cover this cost price. Can you please share with the public the following information? One, why didn't we raise the full amount needed when we went out for the bond? Was it that we couldn't sell enough into the market to cover the full cost? Two, have you ever presented the public the full scope of this work? As someone who founded a clean energy fund, I would be very curious to read what we have planned, what the numbers used in the pro forma war, and if there weren't, and if the expected forthcoming changes to the IRA at the federal level will actually preclude us from executing this deal. And lastly, was this $3 million drawdown from the Capital Reserve incorporated into the budget that was passed? Or is this now a separate drawdown that's needed? So those are three specific questions on this issue. And lastly, my final question has to do with the budget overall. Mr. Hassan explained the board proved of budget on April 29th. As you know, I was there on the 29th. The public heard the board request revise budget numbers for the administration, which would be based on the 18% middle path forward. The public's understanding was that the board instructed the district to present those numbers to them again. We heard Mr. Webb ask how long that would take. Mr. Hassan responded, it would take one day, and that the deadline, final deadline to submit to the county was May 12th. I fully expected another public meeting to take place to hear the final budget numbers and see that vote take place in person. I went back and watched the video, video from last meeting, and Mr. Andrews asked that the resolution instruct the administration to revise the budget for the board's consideration, for the board's consideration. Did that consideration take place someplace else?
One second, Ms. Brown.
Ms. Laura Miranda Brown, that's your time.
Did this consideration take place someplace else?
Is that your last part of your statement? We needed to pause you for a second.
It is. Two more sentences. Like, we're all very interested in this and it doesn't seem that another meeting was had. So an explanation to the community would be greatly appreciated.
No, we understand. We just wanted to give you a moment to finish. But if that's, if you're wrapping up now, then go ahead and finish your statement.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anybody else that has come on since she's been giving remarks?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Pisani? Okay. Mr. Pisani?
Mr. Who?
Hello?
Yes, we hear you, Mr. Pisani. Go ahead.
Hi, I just had, I just wanted to express my opinion on some of the changes for the calendar. Number one, I was against the elimination of Native Citizens Day in October. Number two, as I say, I was against doing professional development days on the election days and on the, on the day before we come back from Christmas break. I was in favor of the half-ties that we had originally proposed. And number three, I would say, I was in favor of having the April 3rd through 10th Easter break instead of the week before, because usually for Catholics, Easter Monday is usually celebrated, and it's celebrated also in other countries, too. And four, I looked up Adel Fatiir, and it starts at 6:00 PM on March 19th. And then the calendar change, you're taking off the 19th, when it should be the 20th, because it starts in the evening. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pisani. Is that it, Nick?
Yes.
Okay, I'll adjourn the motion now to close public comment.
So move. Okay. It's been properly moved by Commissioner Vice President Webb and seconded by Commissioner Malone and Andrews at the Board. Now closed public comment at this time. You've heard the motion, are you ready for the question? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, have the same right. Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
There a motion to go into exec?
Yes.
Motion to go.
One second.
Before we go into executive session, I, I have a comment. I expected to have another budget meeting and it didn't happen. I need clarification as to why.
Ms. Tarsan, may you please provide our commissioners and the public with clarification on how the budget meeting process played out?
As indicated in the memos that I provided to the Board, it was our understanding that we may have to come back depending on what the response was from the county office. As we all, all aware, the final adoption or approval of a budget, it is something that is approved by the executive county superintendent. The resolution that the Board passes to approve the budget is the
One second.
Before we go into executive session, I, I have a comment. I expected to have another budget meeting, and it didn't happen. I need clarification as to why.
Ms. Tarsan, may you please provide our commissioners and the public with clarification on how the budget meeting process played out?
As indicated in the memos that I provided to the board, it was our understanding that we may have to come back depending on what the response was from the county office. As we all are aware, the final adoption or approval of a budget, it is something that is approved by the executive county superintendent. The resolution that the board passes to approve the budget is the approval of the tax levy. It is not the approval of any individual line items in the budget. That's the responsibility of the administration to make those changes or those recommendations that get shared or provided with the board in the presentation, but ultimately gets approved by the executive county superintendent. My task as the superintendent was to contact the executive county superintendent and executive county business official to inform them of the vote that did take place at the meeting and ascertain what steps needed to be taken moving forward. Both of those officials reviewed the meeting, because there's a Zoom link for it, and their response and feedback to me as the superintendent of schools was that the board's vote that was taken, that took place that night, was sufficient for the passing and approval of the tax levy. With the caveat of understanding that legally, any, any changes to the budget as it relates to the line item expenditures, they could only be made in accordance with what was discussed at the board meeting. There was a specific question that was asked of me as the superintendent of schools. And that question was, if the board moves forward with this proposal for a tax levy, what would happen with that additional funding? My response was that we would stabilize our staffing positions, and the positions that were being considered were for us to reduce instructional coaches in the district. And we also had, also responded to saying that we would move forward advancing the capital projects that had first been discussed as being deferrals to future years. The funding could not have gone to any of those, any places outside of what was discussed at that public hearing, and that is what was, was done with those funds. And that were, again, that budget was approved by the executive county superintendent, reviewed by the executive county business official. I think as we left the meeting, there was uncertainty about what we would be informed to do. We didn't know if we were going to be required to have another public hearing, if we needed to go out and re-advertise. That wasn't the case. The board has one public hearing that is advertised legally. That was that meeting that took place on April 29th. And the board can either vote down a budget or take action, another action at the meeting. That meeting that took, that vote that took place in the public was deemed by our executive county superintendent and executive county business official as having been action taken by the board on the tax levy.
Thank you for that. I'm, I'm just gonna go out there and say, I think the clarity that needs to be provided is how the assumption was made that the board actually came to a vote when there was a motion on the floor that the board and the public understood that they were voting on, which was the motion that Commissioner Andrews made. And with the, and obviously we can't speak about it all, because a part of this is legal. So we can continue the conversation in executive session. But just based off of what the board's understanding was, I think we have that same understanding. So I think that's where the clarity needs to be provided. How did it get from where approved, where we're making, the motion was made and the board voted to come back to the table so that we can then do a formal vote? And we understood it that way, the majority of the board, at least to my knowledge. And then obviously the public is not, well, a member of the public is saying that that's how the public, or majority of the public, I can't speak for everybody, viewed it. So I think that's where the clarity is needed. And not necessarily it's passed by the county, which is the latter part of it. But there was, during that meeting, the vote was not specific to passing anything at that time. There was also no resolution read into the record during that meeting. So that's another question as to where the resolution actually came from that the board apparently voted on.
Any vote that you take tonight as a board, if somebody makes a vote, has, introduces, makes a motion from the floor right now, that will be recorded. If you ever have to provide that to an official to show the record of what was voted on, that will be presented in the form of a resolution. That's how that's done. Whether it's written in advance or whether it's something that comes from the floor. Board secretary ever has to send a record of a vote that takes place at a meeting, it is sent in the form of a certified resolution.
But typically when that happens, doesn't the resolution get read into the record and then the board takes that vote?
The board secretary did read into the record what the vote was. Specifically asked the person who made, the board member who made the motion, what it was. I thought that, I think that happened at least maybe twice during that time for clarification, and that was in fact read into the record.
If we have any other questions, but I just want to make sure that legal informs us what questions can be asked in the public regarding this. Okay, so we're gonna discuss the rest of, I mean, I'm not sure if the community member got the clarification. Whatever we can provide to the community with regards to clarification that's not a legal matter, then we'll ensure that that information is provided to the public. But for the, for the purpose of discussing legal as it pertains to this matter, we are gonna discuss the rest of this topic in closed session. And if we're advised in closed session that we can come back to it when we resume public session, then we will address it at that time. I think that is the best course forward.
Do I have a question? Does that work for you?
Well, it'll work right now.
Okay, all right. So if we don't have any more questions from the board out now, entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So move. Second. It's been properly moved by Commissioner Vice President Webb and seconded by Commissioner Malone. At the board now retiring to executive session. You heard the motion. Are you ready for the question? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed have the same right? Motion carried. For the purposes of discussing legal and personnel and contract.
Recording stopped.
Let the board now resume their meeting in the public. You heard the motion. Are you ready for the question? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed have the same right. Motion carried.
Madam President, I will be administratively pulling item M3, which is the adoption of our calendar for the 25-26 school year. Our team worked over the last few school years to be very collaborative with the development of the calendar, although it is an administrative prerogative. Our objectives in developing this calendar for this 25-26 school year is to, one, ensure that we are able to end our school year much earlier. We've ended our school year literally the last five, last six days of the month of June, which is not ideal. So we have made some initial adjustments that would allow us to close out our school year around June 16th or June 18th. But there's a little give or take with that, and I want to make sure that we have complete buy-in from our team members as we go through that process. We've also heard from parents over the last few years about our method for hosting or executing professional development. Having professional development occur on half-day sessions has proposed a challenge for many families as it relates to childcare, et cetera. So taking that into consideration, you will notice on the calendar that is proposed, we have eliminated those single sessions and are in fact moving forward full-day professional development sessions on days in which students are not required to come to school, but staff members will show up. So a great example of that would be utilizing an election day where we close schools, the polling sites, but use schools, buildings that are not closed for polling as locations for professional development. So just want to spend a little more time on that to ensure again we've hit the right balance, and we will come back with that calendar for review and approval at the June board meeting.
Thank you.
Chris, question on clarity. This may not be the time. Would you, if you were doing professional development on election days, would there be, would you offer an opportunity for those people who need to vote to vote on that day? Is that...
Yeah, so on those days, we would actually do a later start. So as an example, probably wouldn't start the professional development until 10:00 AM, right, giving individuals ample time to go vote. We would also try to encourage team members to take advantage of any early voting opportunities. Obviously, if those exist, but we definitely wouldn't want to interfere with any of the individual team members going out to vote. We want maximum participation in our democratic process. I just have one more point of clarity I wanted to make. Obviously, following the conversation, the executive session, this is important for the vote. So on the agenda, this is item K4, leaves of absence. Although you have it here on the agenda for employee number 4740, which is listed number two, and employee number 6690, listed at number 23, my recommendation is that the board denies these leave requests.
Mr. Hassan, Madam President, also have the other walk-on agenda item that was a late receipt. It's a facility fee waiver request allowing the community health screening day offered by the Union County Office of Health Management on May 31st between the hours of 8:00 AM and 3:30 PM, as well as, I'm sorry, at PHS, as well as the North Jersey Association of Realtors Home Buyers Expo to occur here at Charleston and Booker School on June 14th from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. That item will be marked as a walk-on item under the Office of Business Operations, item P, I'm sorry, letter P, walk-on item 15.
Sorry, Mr. Hassan, can you repeat the two recommendations, or the two, not recommendation, two items that you mentioned?
That would be item, item K4.
Got it.
Number two and number 23.
Thank you.
I also have one amendment to a currently published agenda item. This amendment will be for Office of Business Operations, so that would be P11. It is not a walk-on, it is just an amendment adding Madam President to the attendance at that conference. So it will be the board hereby authorizes Hanae Wyatt, Eric Andrews, Rashawn K. Hassan, and Dr. Mark A. Williams to attend the conference. And the proportionate costs associated for the addition of Mrs. Wyatt will be added to that agenda item. I'm sorry, and that's all I have, Madam President.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
All right. Thank you. All right, so I will now entertain a motion for consent agenda.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Andrews and seconded by Commissioner Malone that the board move the agenda as a consent agenda. You've heard the motion. Are you ready for the question? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed have the same right. Motion carried.
Mr. Cox, please note that when calling the roll, that you recuse people from...
Their personal reimbursements, Madam President, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Or any personal conflicts.
Yes, sir, Mr. Vice President, sir.
Appreciate you.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Vice President Webb and seconded by Commissioner Andrews that the board now approve the consent agenda at this time. You've heard the motion. Are you ready for the question? There being none, I will call the roll. Commissioner Smith?
Is she still on?
Has she switched back? Okay, I'll come back. Commissioner Hembry?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, abstain from K9, number 20, K10, number 22, and 24. Yes, sir.
I'll repeat that back, Mr. Johnson, to make sure I have it correct. You're approving, you're saying yes to the entire agenda with the exception of your abstentions noted on K, item K9, number 20, and K10, items 22 and 24?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Malone?
No for K4, employee two, and K4, employee 23, and then, one second, just want to check. Yes, yes for everything else.
Okay, so I want to just read that back. So you are a no for K4, item 22?
What'd you say? Sorry.
I just want to get your noes correct.
Yeah.
You're a no for K4, which would leave of absences, item number 22?
23, and then two.
Okay, 23, and then... Yep, I just wanted to, that's, I thought I heard 22 at first. And the yes for everything else? Commissioner Smith, have you rejoined us?
Did not.
Okay. Commissioner Andrews?
No to two.
So the yes to the agenda with a no vote on K4, item 22, and item 23, and abstain from your own travel to the conference. Two and 23, that's not what I said. I'm sorry, two and 23. I'm sorry, everybody, it's been a little bit of a... Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Hassan. I have that right, sir? All right. Commissioner Vice President Webb? I'm sorry, did, is Dr. Harris on? Did he rejoin us?
No. I am.
Okay. Dr. Harris, your vote, please, sir?
Yes, and no to, and I abstain for anything that is personally connected.
Okay, so you broke up a little bit, so that's a yes, but abstain from your personal connections, and was there any no votes in there, sir?
No.
Noted. Commissioner Vice President Webb?
So that is a no for K4, numbers two and 23.
Okay.
That is a yes for everything else, including my, as long as I'm...
Yeah, your personal conflicts or reimbursements will be noted, sir.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Commissioner President Wyatt?
That is a no for K4, two, and 23, and a yes to everything else.
For reimbursement and personal travel. Yep. Let me just check on one thing here. Madam President, with the noted no votes and abstentions, all items pass with the exception of item K4, number 22, and number 23. That has...
Number two or number three? I thought it was 22, too.
I keep looking at the two twos and it's messing me up, I'm sorry. Madam President, forgive me, all items pass with the exception of item K, number four, items two and 23 fail to pass. The leave of absences failed to be approved.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cox, I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Andrews and seconded by Commissioner Webb that the board now adjourn this meeting in the public. You heard the motion. Are you ready for the question? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed have the same right. Motion carried. Meeting adjourned, 11:40 PM.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Have a good evening.